Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we'll begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning request, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the City 2015 Land Use Plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Can you hear me okay? My name's Anita Wetch and I'll be chairing our meeting tonight. We'll begin with the reading of our consent agenda. And we'll start with Item 1, which is approval of July 2nd, 2008 minutes of our regular meeting. Item 2, which is the middle of Platts. Item 3, which is a rezone from RS 2 Residential District to the Diamond Village Plan Development District at East 73rd Street and South Cliff Avenue. Item 4, which is a rezone from RS 1 Residential District to RA 2 Residential District for development of allowed uses at 3501 South Cambridge Avenue. Item 5, which is a major amendment to Subarea A Regulations to allow a hair salon day spa at 5108 South Western Avenue. Item 6 has been deferred this evening, but I will read it through for you. It was a conditional use permit in the RS 2 Residential District to allow a daycare center at 700 South Sneed Avenue. Again, Item 6 has been deferred. Item 7 is a conditional use permit in the RS 2 Residential District to allow construction of a duplex at 1009 South Sycamore Avenue. Item 8 is a conditional use permit in the RD Residential District to allow construction of four, fourplex buildings and one, threeplex building at West Benson Road and North Galaxy Lane. Item 9 is a conditional use permit in the RD Residential District to allow construction of fourplex buildings at 41st Street and T Ellis Road. Item 10 is a final development plan in Subarea B, Brooks Crossing Plan Development District to construct an allowed use at South Hosta Avenue. Item 11 is a final development plan in Subarea B, Brooks Crossing PD to construct an allowed use at East 54th Street. Item 12 is a preliminary subdivision plan in the Village at 57th and Sycamore PD for Village addition at East 57th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. And those are the items on our consent agenda this evening. Are there any objections from anyone in the audience to any of the items that we have listed on our consent agenda this evening? Can you come forward, please, and just submit your... If you could just state your name and address, ma'am, and what item you'd like us to consider?
Yes, my name is Sharon Hall and I live at 5609 West 43rd Street. And I'm...I want to talk about the rezoning of the residential area to an RA 1 on Cambridge.
So, Item 4 on our consent agenda?
Item 4, right.
And so you're requesting that this move to our regular agenda?
Oh, I would like to...
Say yes.
Say yes, sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to consider moving anything from our consent agenda this evening? Sir?
Same way.
Got it, thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would care to have anything moved from the consent agenda this evening? Are there any objections from any of the Planning Commission members to any of the items on our consent agenda this evening? If so, we'll move Item 4 to the first lineup in our regular agenda. And that being said, is there a motion from the Commission to approve the remaining items on our consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Have a motion as second. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved as stated. Chair votes aye also. If you were here for any of the items on our consent agenda, you're free to leave this evening. And now we'll begin the reading of our regular agenda. And our regular agenda will begin with Item 4, which is the rezone from the Residential District to RA 1 for development of allowed uses at 3501 South Cambridge Avenue. Staff report.
Good evening. My name is Dave Loveland and I'll be representing staff on this item. The applicant has requested to rezone this parcel from the RS 1 District to the RA 1 Residential District. The purpose that the applicant has stated is to eventually construct an off-site parking lot. They'd have to do that by conditional use permit, so there will be another public hearing. On the site itself, the site is .38 acres, about a third of an acre, and it's surrounded mostly by single-family residential. The church that's requesting this is located across the street. It's Peace Lutheran Church, right across Cambridge Avenue to the east. The existing land use right now is vacant because the single-family home has already been moved off of the site. Let's see. And so to let you know that, again, should the rezoning be adopted, the applicant, in order to do the parking lot, will have to apply for a conditional use permit and conduct a public hearing at a later time. The Commission should also realize that if we do rezone to RA 1, all of the allowed uses then under RA 1 would be permitted to be...permitted uses would not come back forward if it's required by conditional use. You'd have to hear it, but anything that's permitted under the RA 1 District would not come back to you. We are asking the applicant at a time when they apply for the conditional use permit that they heavily involve the neighborhood in their design and their meetings to help with the plant...with the parking lot, to screen it and to get neighborhood consensus on what's going on exactly out there. We are recommending approval on this site because the subject application requires further review by the Planning Commission at a time when a conditional use permit would come forward. So, I can answer any questions that you'd have on this.
Dave, can you maybe explain some of the other uses that are permitted under an RA 1?
Yep, certainly. RA 1 District is intended to allow for densities of 10 to 17 dwelling units per acre, which would allow things such as duplexes, fourplexes, eightplexes, and I believe even apartment complexes. But they have to remain underneath that density limit of 17.
So, they could bring a design forward for a twin home or try and not have to come before us again?
Yep, that is correct.
But because they want a parking lot, that will require them to come before us again?
Yep, that is a conditional use, and so they have to do a conditional use permit for the parking lot. This site, you know, one of the things about this site is that it would be so restricted by setbacks and other things that it would be very difficult to really get anything very dense, more than a twin home on that site anyway, just this one parcel. So, you know, we are recommending approval on this because of that and other reasons. So, if the church had anything else to add, I'm sure that they would be willing to come forward.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dave?
Dave, are we saying that if we left it at the RS 1 but give them a conditional use permit to allow a parking lot, that would...could we do that?
We couldn't. Parking lot, off-site parking lot is not...accessory parking lot is not allowed under the RS 1 District, either by permitted use or by conditional use. So, that would not...they wouldn't be able to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Dave? Thank you. Is the petitioner here, please?
I'm Paul Sternholm, Senior Pastor at Peace Lutheran Church, and we are pursuing this because of our growing church on the west side and parking has becoming an increasing issue. And the only option is really available for us to increase parking is to begin the purchase of residential properties to the west. And we are applying for a permit at this time on this, I guess, to see if it is possible, if this is a feasible plan for us to pursue to get more parking. And I'd be glad to answer any other questions.
Any other questions for Paul?
Paul, have you had a neighborhood meeting to talk to the neighbors about putting a parking lot there?
We did. And we had, out of the 12 nearest neighbors we invited, six of them came and we shared the plan. We shared about the...we kind of ran two ideas by them. One was about converting these residential properties into parking, and we also floated the idea somewhere down the street of vacating the property, of asking to vacate the street. And they were not very positive about vacating the street and realized that might be a little more difficult. So, there are other ways we will pursue our parking. It just means we have to buy a few more residential properties.
Do you currently own the other two properties on Cambridge?
No, we don't. One is owned by a member and another owned by a regular contender, and both have verbally consented to give us the first right, first option to buy.
Thank you. I have one more question for you. Have you heard complaints from neighbors that parking is an issue at times when you have services, you have people from the front of the street?
There are...I don't know if they...they have reported that there is on-street parking in front of their homes, but they haven't complained that that's been an issue.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Paul? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that would care to speak to this item? Can you just restate your name and address, ma'am, please?
My name is Mrs. Rod Sharon Hall, and I live at 5609 West 43rd Street. And the parking lot area that we are talking about tonight is directly across the street from my home where I have lived for the past 38 years. And I'm against this zoning, for the zoning for this piece of property that the church owns right now. I had to call the church and ask them about two months ago to please spray for the weeds and the dandelions that were growing on this property. And I'm not sure if they would be able to keep this...the aesthetic...can't say it, aesthetics of this parking lot when the church someday buys the other two adjacent lots. And first off, I would not want this parking lot to be used as a holding area for the buses and the storage garages on a daily basis. Also, the lighting of this area would be a very big concern of mine. Second, when the church buys these other two properties and builds a parking lot, I am concerned about the traffic flow from Larch Avenue to Holbrook Avenue. I don't want this two-block area to become a racetrack for cars or vehicles, so people think they can drive really fast down the street. I would be concerned about the kids in the neighborhood, as well as my own grandchildren who come and visit at my home. Number three, if Cambridge Avenue is vacated in the future, there needs to be an entrance off 43rd Street into this parking lot. Then there should be no need for parking for people to park up and down both sides of the street on Sunday mornings. And that has been a concern. And I called today and talked to Dave Loveland about this hearing tonight, and he pretty much told me that zoning has already approved this change. And I wonder how this can happen, as I thought that was the reason for this hearing tonight, was to hear what the Peace Lutheran neighbors have to say. I was led to believe that parking spaces are based on the seating capacity of the church sanctuary. And right now, the church sanctuary holds 580 people. And I believe there is 189 designated parking spots on the church property. So, that means they have 189 spots and our request should to only have 145, because the ratio, according to Dave, is four people to one parking spot. So, why did they need more parking? But yet they're parking in the streets. So, in closing, I'm wondering what other plans are they withholding from the neighborhood? Thank you.
Before you leave, is there any other questions for Sharon?
Sharon, yes, I'm sorry.
Any questions for Sharon? Thank you for coming tonight. Is there anyone else in the audience that would care to...again, please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Chris Long and I live at 5604 West 43rd Street. I am right next door to where this parking lot is going to be going in. And I am against this rezoning right now because unfortunately, I was not able to attend one of the meetings that they held for the area. So, you know, I've asked several questions of the other members, and I'm just really concerned about what their plans are as far as, like, landscaping it, because I looked on the Sioux Falls website according to what zoning requirements are, and it talks a great deal about, you know, how every 18 spots, you need to plant a tree, you need to have burns in between, you know, houses and the parking lot. So, I want to be sure that if this goes through, that there is a buffer between my house and these people parking right next to it. And I'm also really concerned about closing Cambridge Avenue. It gets used a great deal, and like Sharon said, the road is curvy and the kids like to speed up it anyways. But having that Cambridge there, it's like a spot where they stop, because they realize there could be oncoming traffic. So, it does keep it under control, and I'm really concerned that if they just have free rain on there, it could be a lot more dangerous. And I would also want to be sure that Peace Lutheran carries adequate insurance. Because my house is right next to it, once in a while, we do get gully washes right down at the bottom end of where this lot is at. And I've had them come up into my driveway and across my front parkway. And I just want to be sure that there's no retaining walls or anything like that that could back up any of that water into my basement. And finally, again, the lighting. My bedroom faces straight to this parking lot, so I want to be sure that, you know, if it is aesthetically pleasing and they do plant the trees and it can somehow buffer the lights, I would, you know, be a lot more willing to, you know, consider their plans. But I want to make sure that I don't have some bright spotlight coming straight into my bedroom until all hours of the night. And I also, right now, you know, once in a while, we'll see kids, you know, kind of congregating in their parking lot as it is. I want to be sure that there's some type of insurance that because, you know, kids may pop over into this one, that there's not going to be any property damage or anything like that done. You know, I know that's something they can't necessarily guarantee, but if there is something that sort of makes my house not stand out right next to the parking lot, I would very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Before you leave and we ask for questions, maybe we'll get a couple of procedural answers taken care of for you here in terms of the process. Dave, do you want to explain to them where we go from here?
That's what I was writing down notes here, so bear with me as I go through this. We can't add stipulations that would alleviate some of these concerns onto a rezoning. But what we can do is at the conditional use permit process, when you hear that, that's when we can add conditions on that would deal with things like the parking lot landscaping. They have to follow the minimum zoning codes anyway, which she hinted at, which would, you know, be zero-foot candles at the property line adjacent to residential, including providing a photometric plan that shows that during the conditional use permit process. In addition, you know, you would have the power at the conditional use permit process to add stipulations that would deal with that buses couldn't park on this area, that you couldn't have storage sheds at this area, things like that is within your power to stipulate at the conditional use, just not at the rezoning proportions, so.
Just to clarify, stipulation at conditional use permit, I'm not sure that we can do that. Can we do stipulations at conditional use? Okay.
Yep.
So, we can button it down?
Yes.
We can button down some of these issues for you?
Yep, and that's where we've been...as staff, we've been very...we've been in a lot of communication with the church and telling them that this is something that we're going to be looking for, is them to involve the neighborhood in the design of their parking lot. And the church will have to speak to this, as to how much they are going to involve the neighborhood. But it's something that we're looking for to alleviate some of these concerns, to have a parking lot right adjacent to residential area.
We can also do something relative to the congregation, that we can put a review process on the conditional use permit, so that they kind of go unnoticed that if they're not meeting these, we can pull that use from them.
I'm also curious if there is any information that you have available or that they would have available as to the impact on property values as far as having a parking lot adjacent to residential areas?
We don't have any market study information on that. You know, a lot of it would depend on how the parking lot's designed, I'm sure, and, you know, as you get into that, but I can't speak to that, so.
That's not our issue.
Dave was talking photometric lighting. Excuse me, do you understand what photometric lighting is?
Not exactly, no.
Maybe you can explain that to her.
Yep, it's a plan that shows how much light will be at any given point on their photometric plan. So, on their site plan, they have to show how much light will be downcast onto the property.
Will that give the hours? Because I was told that the ones in their current parking lot shut off at like 11:00 PM.
Well, and that's something that we can also stipulate at the conditional use permit time, so. And as far as the street vacation, too, that has come up. That's not something that you will hear. That's only addressed by the city council, so we...you do not have the power, or we don't even have the power to even look at that.
Okay.
See, Dave, just a quick thought here. Would this be the correct time for us to rezone this property? I mean, if we rezone this tonight, isn't the horse going out of the barn?
Well, I understand what you're saying, and that's why, you know, they do have to do the conditional use permit, and as far as any of the other uses, the site is so restrictive in how small it is itself, that they would have to...and then we'll be working with the church as they acquire other properties to see what kind of measures we can take to...
Do you think some of the neighborhood concern could maybe be alleviated a little bit if we had a plan to look at?
Absolutely.
And we had a...so some of these people know what it was going to look like?
Yep, it sure could be. And that's something that the church will have to speak to, whether they'd be willing to go through the engineering sketching if they, you know, when they're unsure of how the city will look at it. So, it is an expense for them, so they'll have to decide how far they're willing to go. But I'm sure that the neighborhood would like to see something like that, so.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you. Any other questions for Chris? Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience? We'll take one more public testimony tonight.
Hi, my name's Wayne Bowler. I live at 5701 West 43rd Street. I live directly across the street from the proposed parking lot. And I attended the Peace Lutheran Church informational meeting on their plans to convert the properties on the west side of the church, including Cambridge Street, to a parking lot, and I do disagree with their plans. At the meeting that night, the church planning committee indicated that they have no intentions of using the property in question here on Cambridge and 43rd as a parking lot until if and when they acquire the two properties to the north and then attempt to close Cambridge Street. Therefore, I see no need at this time to rezone this property. And I think Ken kind of mentioned that, you know, is this the proper time to be rezoning this? And I can only assume that when the church was expanded in 2004, adequate parking would have been a requirement of the city. So, I kind of wonder why they're asking for more parking, because I would have assumed that they had adequate parking at the time. I feel the current parking concerns of the church are simply due to inadequate church service scheduling. I mean, they're so close together that you got people coming at the same time that people are trying to leave, and once the next service starts, the parking lot's empty. Or not empty, but there's several spaces open, that these cars that are on the parking or on the streets, if the services were spread out a little bit, there wouldn't be any parking on the streets. They'd be parking in the parking lots if they gave time for the people to leave and the people to come. I'm also concerned that the limited size of the property in question here will become a parking lot for the church transportation buses and the two storage sheds, and will become an eyesore for the neighborhood with no benefit to their parking concerns. With that said, I would like to urge the Planning Commission to not pass this rezoning of the property in question. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Wayne? Thank you, Wayne. Paul, would you like to come up and just hit a couple of these before we...
Regarding the timing of the request for this rezoning, it is...was certainly to give our congregation a sense of whether this was a viable plan. Prior to our entry in a capital campaign to raise the funds necessary to make the other purchases of property and to do this, it was to give our congregation a little reassurance that the reason we're raising the money is going to be actually something that is going to be able to materialize. And a rezoning decision tonight would give them the confidence that we're going in the right direction. Regarding the stipulations of what the parking lot would look like, we would certainly take a page from the books of our sister congregation, Our Saviors, who involved the neighbors in the actual planning of the parking lot and incorporated all their ideas and concerns. And we would do that very willingly. There could be certainly stipulations from this board, but I think we wouldn't be hostile to that process of working cooperatively with the neighbors to make it something that would be very functional for both of us.
Thank you. Any questions for Paul?
Paul, so if we rezone, if we approve this tonight, do you plan to make that one parcel a parking lot, or do you plan to wait until you acquire the other two properties?
Well, we are going to plan to wait to acquire the other two properties and then go ahead with the conditional permit process at that time.
Thank you. You're getting a lot of opposition here tonight, and I think what we're hearing is that if your group would make the investment to take this to the next level, which is to develop this plan and show these neighbors your intent and to take them along in the process, that that's maybe a more appropriate way to go than asking us to rezone it first and prove it later. And so, one of the options for us here to consider tonight is to defer, to allow some time for that to happen. Is that something that you're hearing from this group this evening? A lot of opposition just because they need to get to the visual understanding of what they're going to do?
Right, there hasn't been any specifics to offer yet, except a promise to listen and incorporate their concerns into the design. It would...it would...it's a step that's going to happen, the, you know, getting feedback from the neighbors at some point or another. And the timing of that, we could be open to and flexible with either way. I guess I'm saying is that we're not going to do...not going to come with designs to the conditional use permit without having had a chance to work with our neighbors in developing the designs for that parking lot.
I'm not going to get to make a motion tonight or vote unless a tie asks me to, but, you know, we are asking a neighborhood to change significantly from what they originally are. And so, to show them how that in...on paper and on a plan would be...seems fairly appropriate to me as a first step. Thank you. Any other questions for Paul?
Well, there's a difference, Paul, between deferral and denial. Deferral is you can come back at any time. Deny, if we deny this process, you can't come back for an extended period of time.
Six months.
Six months. And so, I think it may be appropriate to take that time to maybe put a little bit of money, as Anita said, maybe towards engineering and visiting with your neighbors. And you can be back here in a month or two, where if we deny you, that really puts you into next year. Where if we deny you, that really puts you into next year, and could maybe significantly delay your process, where if you take the motion yourselves to move forward and do something to meet with your neighbors, it may serve to everybody's benefit, to defer it, as opposed to deny it.
Any other questions for Paul? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, I think we're ready to take commission action on item four. I'll look for a motion, please.
I'm going to make a motion for deferral on this item. I think that, obviously, the church has purchased the property and wants to move forward with something, but there are some questions left out there by some neighbors, and I think all of their concerns probably can be alleviated through a little bit of engineering, and certainly the city design process will speak to a lot of the issues that they have with buffering, landscaping, and lighting. So, I would make a motion at this time to defer this. Item number four.
I'd second that motion.
I have a motion and a second for deferral. Any discussion?
I think, Jesse, I think you've said it very well, and you did also, Anita. I think what they're looking at is a little design plan, a little engineering time and But I think before I could feel comfortable doing a zoning change like we're talking about, I'd like to see the neighbors in support of it, not at this point wondering what it's going to look like, and how many trees and lights and such like that.
Thanks, Ken. Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second for deferral on item four. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item four has been deferred. Thank you, everyone. Item 13 is an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the revised ordinance of the city for parking reductions. Staff report. Hi, Shawna.
Hello. Good evening. Shawna Goldammer, zoning enforcement manager. Haven't been before you in a couple of months. I missed you. What you have here this evening is an ordinance amendment that staff is proposing. Currently in the ordinance, we have the opportunity to reduce parking for a number of different reasons. One would be, or two reasons that you can get a reduction in your parking, is what we're going to discuss here tonight. The first is, you can reduce your parking by giving a monetary contribution to the parking facilities per space, based on a parking index. Since that ordinance was adopted in 1983, no one has used that ordinance. So, in speaking with the park, or, excuse me, the parking facilities board, they thought it would be fine to just eliminate the requirement for them to create the index and review that every year, as well as the parking facilities' contribution reduction. Additionally, in this ordinance, we are asking you to modify the transit reduction. In the current ordinance, it calls for a 10-year bus pass, and there is no such thing as a 10-year bus pass. So with this ordinance, we hope to update and encourage people to, rather than driving and parking at a facility, that they can buy bus passes and get their parking lot size reduced by using the bus. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Shawna, are we just looking for a regular vote motion and a second?
Yep, yes, it's an ordinance amendment, so, yep. And, oh, one more thing, the parking board did act on this and recommend approval on it on Monday night, so they're supportive.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Shawna? Thank you. Anyone else in the audience care to speak to item 13? If not, I'll look for commission action.
Motion to approve item 13.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item 13 has been approved. Item 14 is the review of a conditional use permit in the C2 general commercial district to allow on-sale alcohol at 2601 West 60th Street North. Staff report.
Good evening. My name is Steve Randall, and I'll be representing staff on this item and others this evening. This conditional use permit was granted in May of 2007, and we provided new information other than what was presented at that time in the conditional use staff report. It's very limited. Basically, they have met all of the conditions of their approval, and we've talked to the police department. They've not reported any calls pertaining to the conditional use of this location, and zoning has not reported any complaints for this conditional use, and therefore, staff is recommending a favorable review. If there's anyone else who has expressed an interest in this conditional use, perhaps they'll come forward this evening. That concludes staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve? Steve, if they made it through this week without a complaint, we're probably not going to get one, right?
Well, I kind of looked around. I didn't see any leather.
They'd be here, right. Thank you. Is the applicant here, please? We're just surprised that you're here.
My name is Lonnie Entman, J.L. Harley Davidson. My home address is 420 Metal Arc Circle, Brandon, South Dakota.
I'm Shawna Roth with J.L. Harley Davidson, and also represent Flantri Promotions Incorporated, the nonprofit that is asking for the conditional use.
Anything you guys would like to add for our review purposes tonight?
Just seek approval.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Shawna? So it's worked well for you?
It has. All the proceeds that we raised as a result of the sale of on-sale alcohol, it's just for special events as well, all that is then donated to local charities or regional charities.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone in the audience that would care to speak to this item tonight? Now I'll look for commission motion on item 14.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item 14 has been approved. We are going to hear item 15 and item 16 together. We'll hear them together, we will vote on them individually. Item 15 is a design review in the 49th Street Design Review District for a proposed telecommunications tower at 4,000 and West 49th Street. Item 16, then, is the conditional use permit in the C4 planned commercial district to install that new telecommunications facility at same address, 4,000 West 49th Street. Staff report.
The design review of 49th Street Design Review District is required of the planning commission, and that's why we are on the regular agenda. I've tried to provide as much information as I can in the staff report concerning the conditions that they are supposed to address in their design of the facility, which is basically a telecommunications tower located on an easement on the subject property, the easement being granted by the Empire Mall. I verified that with them today, that they have acquired that easement and are moving forward with their request. It's a 9.3-acre site. There's a vacant lot to the north in the C4 district, the Empire Mall's in the C4 planned commercial district. And to the south, there is an apartment complex in the Valhalla PD. To the east, there's a vacant lot in the C4, and to the west, there's a motel parking lot in the C4. 49th Street Design Review District really gets into addressing landscaping, setback, access control, and orientation of signage, and screening of parking. The approval of plans have to address the access, which it does conform, the site development requirements of landscaped setbacks conforms. The OXPOS don't come into play here, but it is a condition to consider. Cluster development is not really being considered, because the site is remaining vacant, except for the easement improvements. And development of the design review project is, really only has one condition to consider, and that's the planning of required landscaping on the property, because it is being developed. The rest of the property's not being developed, so staff is willing to consider a deferral of those kinds of landscaping improvements, until a project actually gets going on the site, other than the telecommunications tower. Otherwise, they are indicating the required landscaping in the street right-of-way for the 49th Street Design Review District. The plan is complete, as far as its presentation of improvements. The tower is indicated as a standard prefabricated telecommunications tower with stealthed design as a flagpole, and be an antenna support structure then for the communications equipment. It will fly the flag and meet flag display protocol. At the base of the tower, screening is indicated as a masonry wall 10 feet high, with a tapered concrete masonry unit cap and brick veneer. It conforms to the screening requirement for the parking and telecommunications equipment, however, it should be limited in height to eight feet. They've also indicated a chain-link fence at a portion, and with barbed wire, and that is not acceptable to staff for screening or security. We brought these items up to the applicant, and I believe they have not had time to change their plan, and so we're adding these as stipulations for approval. First stipulation is that the masonry screen wall with brick veneer and tapered masonry wall cap at a maximum height of eight feet. The second stipulation provides screening of the exposed freestanding utilities and equipment with brick veneer masonry wall or landscaping at a minimum height of six feet. And that, we've had no calls on this, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for staff? Thank you. Is the petitioner here, please?
My name's Todd Ralph, 5750 Valley High Road Northwest, Rochester, Minnesota. I'm here on behalf of Verizon Wireless tonight, here to answer any questions I can. Matter of fact, I think there's been a couple of the issues that Stephen mentioned, that Verizon's already addressed in some of their plans. They've got some landscape, I think they're planning on eight trees, and then seven bushes surrounding the facility to help cover that stuff. And we should have new drawings in place here, within the next couple of weeks, to get out to Steve for that.
Sounds good. Any questions for Todd?
Todd, is Kurt okay? He's been here for the last six meetings.
Yeah, he's just at another meeting tonight. And I was in the area, so he called me up and...
Okie dokie, thank you.
Any other questions for Todd? So you're in general agreement with the stipulations that are put forth?
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that would care to address this item? Now I'll look for commission action on item 15, which is the design review.
I'll make a motion to approve item number 15 with the two stipulations.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? A motion and a second for approval on item 15. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item 15 has been approved. Now we'll vote on item 16, which is the conditional use permit. Motion from commission, please.
Motion to approve item 16 with the three stipulations.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item 16 has been approved. Item 17 is a conditional use permit in the RD residential district to allow accessory parking onsite and offsite, in conformance with Chapter 15.55, at 3313 South Center Avenue. Staff report.
The applicant is proposing to remove some existing houses, and to expand in existing parking accommodations for their office development at the subject property. Bowen Associates is the applicant and owner, and it's a small parcel that they're actually wanting to improve, but they have agreed to plat that parcel into a larger parcel, so that it will be considered onsite parking, not offsite parking. It's the same conditional use permit standards that apply to onsite and offsite accessory parking in the office district, so we will go through those. The standard says that onsite, or the onsite parking is to be constructed in conformance with the standard parking regulations, additional use regulations, screening, landscaping, and so on. It's the offsite parking that gets a little consideration for leasing and showing acceptable distance and things, so we don't have to worry about that this evening. The conditional use plan that, as provided, does indicate the required improvements to address the ordinance, there are some things that have to be maybe fixed a little bit in their application for a building permit. They show a berm along the street, screening the parking, which, if the berm is constructed according to the standards for screening, there would not be sufficient site in order to accommodate that, to that particular height, without adding some additional landscaping, and we don't know what that is yet. But we're confident that applicant understands the screening requirements enough, that they will have a plan in place to meet the zoning ordinance, when it comes time to get their permit. The more important thing, I think, is to consider the fact that the property would meet the setback requirements as it's replatted, and then the landscaping requirements for screening. They are providing additional trees and the proper placements. They do have to provide street trees, or, excuse me, trees in the front yard along the street. At this point, we are considering adding a stipulation to address the percentage of trees that would be allowed to be ash trees, or green ash trees, or ash trees that are subject to a new disease that's spreading across the country, and we've included that in our requirement, and I think Dave has talked to the applicant about that. No?
They're nodding their head.
Okay. Perhaps the applicant can come forward and talk about that requirement, but basically, it's a, intent is to get more diversification in tree planting, so that if that disease does come through, it won't wipe out all of the required tree plantings. So, in conclusion, the subject property will be platted prior to building permit issuance, and a site plan revised to meet required setbacks, landscaping, and lighting for all proposed parking lot improvements, according to ordinance. The minimum side yard setback noted is 10 feet, and parking's not allowed in the front yard, or, excuse me, the required side yard and front yard. Staff is recommending approval, subject to this revised plan that will meet the requirements, and secondly, will provide no more than a 10% location of black ash, green ash, or other ash tree varieties in the required landscaping. A landscaping plan specifying the exact species and variety of each tree should be submitted as part of the plan check application. There is one residential property that is being left on the corner, and the applicant has stated that they have met with all of the property owners in that area, and no one has contacted us as far as objecting to the plan, and that concludes staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Applicant, please.
Rich Wonkey with JS Engineers, 6810 South Glen Crest Avenue, Sioux Falls, 57108. I'm representing Don Bowen, which is the petitioner here for this conditional use. I should mention there that Bowen and Associates had a neighborhood meeting on July the 29th at their office. They had sent out letters to the various residents that were surrounding this property, and they had two people that showed up. They went through the explanation of the conditional use, and there was no objection at that time. The landscape plan is what Steve mentioned about the different types of trees and the amount of ash trees. We have contacted Anderson Landscaping here, they work with Bowen and Associates down there on their landscaping, and they will be preparing a landscaping plan for us on that thing that will meet the city requirements. Let's see what else I've got. I believe that's, oh, I've got, we have indicated, at least with Don, I've visited with him about replating the property. One thing here, the new subdivision ordinance that went into effect here the 4th of August down here, they have a little thing on the back of the new subdivision ordinance called add-on agreements on that thing, which means that you don't have to replat the property. It's on the last subdivision ordinance there. I should mention that to you here. I also sit out on the IRAB board, so I know what it went through.
Okay.
I'll have to take any questions here.
I've seen Rich at a lot of the IRAB meetings.
He probably knows what he's talking about.
Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience that would care to speak to item 17? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
I'd move for approval. I'd move for approval of item number 17. Two stipulations.
I'll second. I have a motion, a couple of seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor of approval for item 17, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item 17 has been approved. Item 18 has been deferred. It was a minor amendment at 6320 South Cliff Avenue. Again, that item has been deferred this evening. We will move to item 19, which is the final development plan in SubArea C, Rolling Heights Plan Development District, to construct a medical office building at West 69th Street and South Western Avenue. Staff report.
Next month, Dave gets all of these. Item 19, the final development plan in Rolling Heights, is actually one of several now that have been approved in that area and have been under construction. If you've been down in that area recently, the street's in, there's a kind of a roundabout where you can practice your turning movements and things. Don't have to go out to the arena. You just, and the buildings are looking really nice. This particular site is kind of in between two buildings that have been previously approved, and so it does line up with the setback requirements, and it does have a shared access with the building to the west. And I think as far as the location goes, it's right along Western Avenue, and if it were over on the other side of the street, we would have some neighborhood concerns with residents who were very heavily involved in the planning of this subject property. But otherwise, they are meeting all of the SubArea C requirements for landscaping. They do have to show street trees on Western Avenue. That wasn't on the plan. And staff is recommending that a sidewalk or pedestrian walkway connection from the sidewalk along the street up to the entrance to the building be provided. Thirty-four parking spaces are required. Thirty spaces are provided on the site, but four additional spaces are in the private street as allowed by SubArea regulations. Five street trees are required in the Western Avenue Boulevard and should be shown on the site plan when they apply for their building permit. And again, we'd like to apply that mix or variety of tree plantings, no more than 10% of the ash trees, to be provided, and we would include that as a stipulation. Signs are indicated to conform to the old office, General Ole Office District. Building type is a one-story medical office with 6,725 square feet. Exterior walls are brick and insulating systems. Roof pitch is a 412 with asphalt shingles, and floor plans are open for a single tenant. There are no other proximities to consider. There is a church close by within 600 feet, and there is an off-sale alcohol store at the Come and Go Store on West 69th. Of the 16 points required for final development plans, they meet all except for the documentation of ownership and maintenance, responsibility of any common open spaces. This is a private development, and we expect that that would be between the landowner and the developer. The city is not maintaining the private street. The private street should be provided adequate fire access and may be required to be posted. There's no parking on one side of the street. The fire department has been down there to check access, and we're okay there. They are working on some improvements. And the site is being developed in accordance with the old general office district. Staff recommends approval with two stipulations. One, that they provide a pedestrian sidewalk connection from the private street sidewalk to the front of the building, and two, that they provide no more than 10% of ash trees in the plantings and a greater variety. We've had no calls, and that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve on item 19? Thank you, Steve. Is the petitioner here, please?
Hello, Chad Van Busker, representing Van Busker Construction. Plan to continue with the theme that we've begun to develop with two buildings we've got existing in the Remington Point subdivision. Again, thank you for the recommendation to staff as well. As Steve mentioned, we are meeting all the stipulations of the plan development, and other than clarifying perhaps the landscaping, I think we're pretty well, well, are in compliance with all the stipulations required for the plan development, and request approval.
Thank you. Any questions for Chad? Chad, when you say clarify the landscaping, do you mean take stipulation number two, kind of review your landscaping plan and make sure that you don't have to make any changes to it?
No, actually, well, we neglected to submit one, so that'll be part of the final review. So, we will have to get one, and we have no problem with the stipulation here, so.
Okay. Any other questions for Chad? Thank you. Anyone in the audience that would care to speak to item 19? Seeing none, I'll look for commission action.
I'll motion for approval on item 19 with the two stipulations.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? Motion and a second for approval. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, same sign. Item 19 has been approved. Item 20 has been deferred. It was a final development plan at East 57th Street and South MacArthur Lane. Again, that has been deferred this evening. And item 21 for us is deferral. I'll look for a motion, or deferral. Thank you. Adjournment. I'll look for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I have a motion and a second for adjournment. All in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
We are adjourned this evening.